All right. We will call meeting in order at five four six. Doug, if we just know the wall, that's fine. Yes. Is there anybody here to appear on an item that is not on the agenda? The all applicant.
Yeah.
And we have no other way of room. We'll close the appearance section. We need a motion for the approval of this come your twenty eighth minutes.
Motion go through.
Sir, a second.
Second.
All right, any edits?
No.
All right, so you're done? All those three say aye.
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 Post, minutes have passed and we can move on to items five, which is public hearing. And this is we're running four, four eighteen Lebel Lane. I remember it's something that varies from the known municipal code board in section four eighty twenty four D. For A, the street yard setbacks for the purpose of adding a second stall to the existing. This is case number Z zero zero eight twenty twenty three. And it's Rachel and Stephanie, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys come up. During the public hearing section, it's usually best just to kind of get in general, what's the brief thing that is that you're trying to do? And then if there's others that end up showing up. And want to speak, this would be the time that they would speak regarding the application and then when we close the public hearing section. And we move on to the consideration of action that's where we discuss it more than detailed. So this section is generally what is it that you're trying to do?
Okay, um, my name is Rachel Riley. This is my wife Stephanie Dobins Beck. Our pronouns are she/her. And we live at four one eight Lebel Lane. It is a. A corner. So it has two street yards and it is. Characterized most uniquely by its cul-de-sac corner as we call it, call the corner. Here's a diagram. Anyone would like to state itself in the application. Essentially, there was a cul-de-sac perhaps at one point or maybe always, I'm not sure. And there are two, two. Entry points to the road and we are looking to expand our existing attached one car garage to a two car garage. Which would require a variance for the, our side yard, which is a street yard for an additional. Eleven and a half feet, I believe. Yeah, eleven and a half feet. And the. There. There you go. Um, the hardship is due to the, the two street yards posed on the corner of the property. And the sightlines, understanding that this variance is, or the, excuse me, the. The setbacks and the ordinance are there for safety for sightlines. For people traveling around the corner, but what are called the corner, which I think is the only one in Manona that I know of, allows for pedestrians and motorists to. More widely circumnavigate that corner safely. Because right now, the tree that lives there or that is on the corner of our property that creates the house itself. It would block. The light, the line of sight for, for driving, but that called the corner allows pedestrians and motorists to, to more widely turn around it anyway. So the addition of a garage would not. Further impede sightlines. Uh, because the vegetation is already there. Anything I missed?
And right now, the way it's set, we have cars that park on the street that get in the way of line of sight around that corner to begin with. And extending the garage would remove cars off of that corner.
Yeah. Our family's second vehicles in the driveway, which is a two stall driveway anyway. So the, the car is either there or pushed even if. Um, a garage or a variance was approved to build a garage, the car would be able to go further into the property, which would actually. Get the car further away from the street. So.
Yeah, it looks like. We had some joy. It's a two people done.
Hi, Paul.
I know, um, I spoke to Sarah Cahill. Sarah's a future applicant who is following along, kind of observing the meetings. Believe Paul is.
Neighbor.
Yeah. Hi, Paul.
He's muted.
You're on mute.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
All right.
And Paul, so we are in the public hearing section and. Uh, Rachel and Stephanie gave an overview of, of their project and if anybody is here to speak. Regarding this item, now would be the time.
Uh, yeah, yeah, we are, we are their neighbors. We live kitty corner. Um, from their property and we are just letting. Um, them and the board know that we are supportive of their addition.
Okay, and can you give us your address, Paul?
Four one six Woody Lane.
Okay. It helps for our minutes.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Awesome. And Sarah, it sounded like you were just a, a, a nice observer for the night.
Yes, we're hoping to attend the November meeting, so just that I would observe and, and just sort of see the process and how everything goes. So thanks for letting me, um, just observe.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, and seeing nobody else here for the public hearing section, we can close that, move on to item six. Which is the consideration of action for the forty, four one eight Lebel Lane. Uh, from the request for the variance for regarding the ordinance four eighty twenty four D for A, street yard setbacks for the purpose of adding a second stall from the existing garage. This is case number Z zero zero eight twenty twenty three. Doug, do you want to, you know, start with you and.
Yeah, send. Thank you. So, so the request here is, as the, the applicants mentioned, is because of the two street yards. So we have Lebel Lane effectively north, south, Woody Lane, east, west. And that's running sort of along the two property boundaries. So everything. Forward of the house towards either of those two streets is going to be determined as a street yard. Um, anything behind the house, um, sort of towards the corner, the northeast corner there is going to be. Uh, home zoning will actually go off as side yards rather than any graveyard designated. So the reason for that is really, uh, if, if you're having two street yards and some of the, um, you know, the, the requirements and restrictions that puts in place. If you have two yards elsewhere, um, only two, two yards elsewhere on the property, they will be the side yards. So everything effectively in the backyard has, uh, has, has maybe, uh, used by the applicants. That is sort of the graveyard there. So. And that would be a seven foot setback. Uh, but the request here is sort of adding to the southern end, um, I believe about eleven and a half feet, as, as was mentioned, to, to add a second stall to the existing garage. Uh, that is in the street yard, both the street yard of Lebel, but also the Woody Lane as well. Um, the street yard setbacks typically thirty feet, three zero, and so that is what necessitates the variance. There are no other, uh, variances or anything else that are required as part of this.
You want to. Sure. All right.
So Doug, just a question, a clarification from you first. So thirty feet is the, would be the setback.
Yes.
Of where the garage is, where they're wanting to put the garage. Essentially, then you have two street yard setbacks, basically, as opposed to just one.
Yep.
Um, and what's the side yard is seven?
Yes. So anything.
I mean, if they had, if they have. I live right by there. I'm on West Gate, so and that's part of my walking route, so I'm very familiar with the big wide. And I appreciate it because you can see all around, um. I mean, the people that live directly, if you're facing your house, live right next to you. They don't have thirty feet between their garage and your yard because they have an actual side yard, so they're able to be closer.
Yep.
So right now. As it, as it stands, they're already out of compliance with the single car garage, correct? Twenty eight point eight.
Cool feet.
Yep.
That's, that's all I have at this moment.
When? Would you like to go next?
Am I out next?
Yeah.
All right.
All group and I think Ryan's an alternate, so I.
Uh, he will be running tonight.
Okay, I'm voting next. Yep, I'll go to you next, Ryan, so be ready.
Yeah, um, definitely a unique. Yeah, not cul-de-sac, not corner, uh.
Call the corner.
Sure. I think that is, um. Definitely a, I would say a benefit to the situation. Um, in this corner. Lot. Um. The safety right to the public, right, is we're always trying to address these key points. Um, if it was just a regular. Corner intersection, there'd be a limited amount of. Uh, viewing from right from traffic. Um, in that sense. Um. The only question I have is. Uh. There is that, uh, large tree there. Uh, from the committee's point of view. I don't know if that. Uh, makes or breaks or any difference in anybody's view of, of the tree. Uh, let's just say like nature does its course and when it gets struck by lightning tomorrow. Um. Would that be a benefit? I mean. Obviously, there's the tree does have some restriction right to it, um. And I'm not sure if that, um, would. Yes, my point is that, uh. If the tree was not there, it'd be. I guess better, right, a better sightline for everyone. Uh, in that sense. So. Corner lots are always, um. Difficult to determine with the. Thirty foot, uh, required setback, um. As mentioned. And it always seems to be on the wrong side. In that sense, I. Uh, in this situation, I, I really can't find any relevant, uh, area or concern from safety, public. Um, that concerns me, um. Um, if they were to move forward with that.
All right, Ryan.
Uh, yeah, um, just first of all, thanks for preparing these materials. I think you guys did a great job. Yeah. Um. So I, I. I think the proposal makes sense and, you know, I just want to, um, echo what Wynne said about. Um, safety and, and the actual sightlines, right? And that goes to, in the variance process, the, the purpose of the. That goes to the, the purpose of the actual. Regulation, right? That we would still be able to maintain sightlines around the house with the, um. Setback. Um, I do struggle a little bit with the. Um, unique property limitations. I'm also on a corner lot. And I'm kind of lucky that the. That the garage is on the other side, right? So, so when, um, it was before I moved here, but when the garage was expanded, it was expanded towards the side yard setback instead of towards the, the front yard setback. Um, so I. I think it's kind of a, it's kind of a theme that we hear in these meetings is that a, a corner lot is not. Unique physical limitation, right? It's just a property of your, your property, a characteristic of your property. So, um. I don't know, I'm kind of, uh. Uh, in the middle there.
I think it is a unique. I mean, I don't see, I mean, it looks like a swollen elbow basically. And I don't know of any other property like this in Manona as well. I mean, I walk all over this place and I don't, I have never seen one like this and it is. It's a, it's quite a wide. From the end of the garage now to the, to the curb is quite wide. Um, and it does have this kind of bowling out effect. So I, I do think it is unique, um, because I don't see other lots like this. Am I wrong, Doug? You don't see unique property in Manona, this kind of layout?
I think the, uh, it would probably be more the combination with the street and the.
Right, the two.
Kind of together, but. Um, I'm not sure. How many I've seen with sort of the curved lot line as, as shown here to the west of the tree. Uh, how many of these are more, um, ninety degree angles, you know, in the corners, uh? So maybe a little bit of unique, but I, I think it's, for me, it's more sort of the combination with the road, with, with the street.
Yeah, uh, what I had a brief conversation with earlier and had to do with clarifying the. What I think of as the backyard is actually a side yard. And I think it does speak to the unnecessary hardship and unique physical property limitations because. If you were to add a curb cut. Um, Woody. And build a garage behind your garage. You could build a pretty big garage because you go all the way seven foot. To your neighbors.
With those neighbors though.
Yeah, I mean, you could.
No, there's.
In essence.
Means in theory.
In theory, yeah.
In theory, you could put a. Big garage right there.
They're concentrating that not as a backyard, but as a side yard.
Yeah.
It would require another street cut, yeah.
But I think what it does is it requires an additional curb cut, additional driveway, a, a large reorientation of many, many things, which I think is the. The hardship and aspect to this is. The, the curb positioning on the lot and the, the bulbous kind of aspect of the street. Um, to me gets to the unnecessary hardship and the unique property limitations. And I think we've already covered no harm to public interest, but. Those would be my, my only added. Two cents. Any other comments or questions that come up? And if not, is someone willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion unless you two guys have something else to say.
Um, maybe I just, uh, one question and maybe this is towards, uh. Doug, Mr. Palmer, is. You know, with this extension of a garage or a structure, it's just called a structure. Um, towards a street. Um, and if that was to be built, you know, they're at seven. End up being like seventeen some odd feet, right? Um. Is there any safety concerns to the public being that close to Woody Lane? Be it a garage, be it anything that we, as part of our house, right? Uh, that's the only concern I would have is. Just that, right? Um, we have a house, what are, is there some type of. Relevance? With that?
Yeah, so not typically something that is reviewed. I, I think it would be. Part of the larger variance process. I think the, the thirty feet street yard setbacks, um, I think as previously alluded to, would probably. Address some of those concerns with safety, with sightlines and, and things like that. I know other elements such as signage and fences, for example, that may go a lot closer to the street.
Mm-hmm.
Do both, um, have deference to the building inspector in terms of any concerns with the vision triangle and, and things like that. Uh, I think, you know, that's ultimately something for, for this board to, to look at, but. I think for the most part, the zoning regulations kind of take care of that, um, from, from a safety perspective. I think with this one, um, I don't believe that to be a sidewalk. Does the privacy line goes right to the curb? Okay.
No, no. No, so. Am I allowed to speak?
Go for it.
Okay. Um, to clarify, when the. The proposed garage would only allow a seventeen, roughly a seventeen foot, um, distance to the property line, but still thirty seven feet to the curb.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Yep, I see that now. Yep, and then you have a proposed. Uh. Fence structure, correct?
That is an existing fence. It, um, was there when we bought it and when we got it surveyed. Really recently, we found out that it is over our property line by a little bit. Everybody.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Didn't get it through.
Well, it was.
It was there.
Installed that way when we purchased it and, um, yeah, the, the surveyor was like, well, you. You got a little extra, I guess, so. The fence already exists.
I guess, yeah, I would, uh, as more of a comment from the, from our committee. I would prefer to see, I'm surprised that they don't have on this survey, that fence. Does it, I, I, am I, am I looking at the survey correctly? Um.
It's on, it, it's on this, it's on the survey. It's.
It's, it's, it's the, it's the X dotted line, it, right?
Correct. Yes.
And, okay, so it's beyond by a foot or so? Three feet?
Yeah, yeah, the marker, the corner of, uh, the southwest. West corner is pretty much on the line. The survey makes it look a little different. The pink stake is like right in the corner of our fence. And the southeast corner, it, the fence exceeds the property limit by about a foot and a half.
Okay, yep, there it is. Okay, all right, thank you for that clarification. Yep.
It's kind of a slightly less than parallel line.
Yep, okay. All right, thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, and that's all I have.
Ryan, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Okay, well, I'd like to move into approve. Um, the variance request. I think the hardship is much like, um, Brian stated and that. If you wanted to add to your, you certainly could do it in the back at great expense and, and having to extend the driveway and. The aesthetics of putting a tandem garage. In your backyard or however is, it just seems like an unnecessary hardship and expense. Um, you do still have, I mean, I know that there's wide sightlines there and the tree is large, but it's a gorgeous tree and, um. Hope it doesn't get struck by lightning.
It's a neighbor.
Um, so I, I think that's, that's becomes the hardship. I think that, um. You know, having the unique property limitation is the street. You have two street yard setbacks and you have this rounded out kind of. Elbow. Um, that also presents a unique property limitation. I don't think there's any harm to the public interest. You have. Uh, Paul here, that's, you know, attesting. I mean, I go around, I see the. Play stuff in your yard and so yes, it's obviously more than just you and your family using it. So I think there's no harm to the public interest.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussions? Doug, you have everything in the.
Good.
All right. Uh, all of us in favor say aye.
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 The post. What's that?
Sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Watch your rep.
Now we can go. Paul's daughter actually plays in the front tree almost every day.
Every day. The cul-de-sac corner is the.
Basketball court.
Lebel of Rome, so they're in, in the street all the time.
I love there.
Well. Little Carl's out there too. Which encourages the kids to get out and play and also encourages motorists to slow down, so.
Yeah.
It works. Um. In terms of next steps for us, we have to just apply for building permit.
Yes, so I will be in touch, uh, early next week with, uh, stamped approved plans. Um, I'll copy the, uh, building inspector as well. And basically put the, to put you in, in contact with him.
Okay.
And then you'll be able to just come through your contract to comply for building permits. We'll, we'll need just kind of construction drawings, things like that, that, that would be a part of that. But as far as I'm concerned now, this is clear zoning, so it would just be a matter of building, so.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
People stop on by anytime. Stick around or?
Oh, you think so?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you. Bye, Paul. Bye, Lucy.
Goodbye, thank you.
Set a baby.
All right, we can move on to item seven, which is a public hearing by Liam and Deborah. At eleven hundred Nishishman Trail and their request to have variance for the Menon and Menon's school to the ordinance section four A, the twenty four D for D, which is the short yard setback for purposes of building addition. To existing property and construction. And constructing a replacement deck. This is case number Z zero zero nine twenty twenty. For the, they, they, we have, they will give us a brief overview and then quickly moving away here for the public hearing section and then we would move on to put a consideration back.
Thank you. Um, I don't think we'll win this year of this public hearing. We have the letters from our neighbors.
Okay.
And they're, they're included. We didn't invite them to.
Yeah, no, sometimes it's good to show up midway through, so.
Okay, now we know.
In case they do. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, we visited you all right before COVID. Um, since then, we have reduced the, the, how far the. The expansion would go out towards the lakeside. We brought it back a couple of feet. So the purpose of this is to expand so that we could Asian place. Um, we would, um, move the washing, washer and dryer from the basement to the first floor, expand the size of the bathroom, um. We don't have enough room to make it officially handicapped accessible, but to make it more handicapped friendly. Um, and then to that, that would necessitate moving the kitchen out to where that part of the deck is. Um, the, on this, the undue hardship, I guess I would call it, is because of how the lot. Is shaped. It's an unusually shaped lot. And then the house, where the house is situated on the lot, the actual buildable space. Is also an odd shape. And so it, it would, if we just built on the buildable space, it would aesthetically not look good. So, and also the other thing that I wanted to point out is where the house is now, um, the, the primary issue is, at least in our understanding. Is on the Laguna North side or the channel side, um. Where, where the house goes out where the existing house is, it's twenty four feet. From the channel and you can see how the house is shaped. Where it actually, if, if that's okay, um, here we are. That's right. Here's the. There's the. There we go, yes. So here's where. Uh, it already is. No, here's where it already is. So then it would just continue on. But it actually moves because where the house is shaped, it actually moves away from. Away from this is where the kitchen would be. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Plans.
Yeah, yeah. So is there a. So that's the unique property physical, the unique property limitations, the unnecessary hardship. Um, there is no harm to public interest because the channel side is tree lined. And so. No one would be able, like our neighbors, it wouldn't impede their view at all because there are already trees there. What else can I clarify? Because there's a lot of information in here.
Yeah, well, I would say both sides of the property industry. So even the neighbors on our other side are trees lined, so they, they don't have a. They can't see that addition at all. Um, and our neighbor on the other side of the house can't see. Uh, on the front side of our house can't see the addition. All three of those neighbors. Both the channel side, the, our other sided neighbor and the. Uh, across the way, uh, all on day, you know, males kind of saying. They highly recommend that we. Go forward and there's no. Ingetings from their perspective. I would say the, the one thing I said, and she already kind of mentioned it, but the biggest thing we have done from the original time that we came. First time is we've taken that, that it was the, if you take a look at the deck, that is existing deck that was there. The prior, the prior, um, proposal we came forward with a couple of, two, three years ago, um, expanded to be beyond that. Um, we have now taken that, we have now taken the kitchen back two feet so that it aligns with the farthest part of the deck towards the, the lakefront. So it is now in line with that. So. So that was not probably the biggest thing we've done, other than we have, um, the other thing that we are doing. We, the existing plans of moving the, the laundry from the basement to the upstairs, um, our, our. Art stairs going down to the, the basement where our laundry is, they're very, they're, it's a very old home original. So they're very steep and very narrow. And so we want to move that up to the first floor, expand the bathroom, like you said. But the other piece, um, that we are, uh, opposing in this is that we have two entrances to get into the house. Are, we have a basement on our property. Because we're on the lake, we have a basement that, because of that, we're elevated, uh, five feet up from. Um, you know, our, the, the entrance to our house, we have to go up two sets of stairs, either through our front door or the side door. And on the one side, we're opposing that we're gonna, as part of our, the, the expectation that we want to age in place, we're gonna make a railing into that. Uh, backside door, um. Strong enough so that we can put a motorized lift on it at some point in the future. So, you know, that's one of the things, because there are a number of, of safety features that, right, we wanted to add in. Our deck is not very safe as it exists right now. There's not railings. To go down, uh, on our deck. Um, you exit out the backside of our house and you can see, there's a picture and you have a part of it. There's no railings there. My mo, my mother, who's ninety, can't get down them. Um, so that. Um, so that'll go away. We're gonna make the deck even with the, the floor of the kitchen. And we're gonna have obviously railings and, and everything very sturdy um in, in addition to some of the, other things we talked about. So.
Questions, what can we clear?
Uh, well, since we have no one new here, we'll close this section and then we can get into conversation, but quite. Uh, so we'll close item seven, which was the public hearing, we'll move on to item eight, which is the consideration of action. For eleven hundred institution trail and request of variance from the uh code of ordinance four eighty, twenty-four D four D. Shoreyard setbacks for the purpose of building in addition to the existing property, constructing a replacement deck. Case number Z zero zero nine twenty twenty-three, Doug.
Thank you. So as the applicants have mentioned, similar to, to the previous application, there are two shoreyards here. Um, any portions of property that, above any sort of water, uh, counts as the shoreyard. And the shoreyard setbacks there are fifty, five zero feet back from meander line. Uh, and so you can see on the eastern face, kind of close to like Menona. There is a meander line that is shown, um, and that is shown on the uh Wisconsin mapping survey uh with the stamp on that one. See, see the meander line that uh the Laguna north does not have a platter meander line. So kind of the default there would be that we'd go from the shoreline itself, um, sort of the furthest points and, and measure it. Both of those for the proposed addition, um, it is sort of false within that, uh, on both sides. I should add and should clarify that the only variance being requested this evening is part of the addition. The deck as proposed is sort of a um shrinking of that deck, the, the footprint is not expanding in, in any way. As mentioned, some different levels will be taken out, it will be flushed, uh, and even though it is an existing building. Uh, because it's being rebuilt and the footprint is actually decreasing, um, that is, is allowed. Um, the application here. Um, again, it's, it's because of the, the sort of volume addition, you know, the fact that this is an enclosure of the, the existing deck. For the, the kitchen area for that addition, um, that is the reason that necessitates the variance. Um, the, the footprints, you know, so from the, from the bottom may not be changing, but the fact that it is being, always becoming a leaning space versus a deck. Um, is, is what necessitates variance. Um, so with that being said, there would be no um floodplain concerns or anything like that. This is all um well above that, so the, the variance being requested tonight is, is simply the, um, the shoreyard um setback variance, just for the addition.
Okay, I want to make sure I heard correctly. Even this section is. Keeping in line with the current footprint of the deck. That exists, so it's not.
That, that's my understanding is that there would be no further encroachment of any bills area, um.
Well, let's, let me clarify, you might have two pictures that are, you have these, with these pictures, um, and they're, what they're drawn on. The one, there's one that looks like it has kind of a, a crooked, it has the, you can see the stairway going up. That is the existing deck, so it is.
Oh, I see.
Um, so you, the, the deck goes out here, but it does kind of kick back in on this corner where the proposed kitchen is. And there's a stairway that comes down. What the proposal is on the second one is literally just to extend from the existing house straight out. You know, cut the corner similar to the other side of the house and, and stay even with the outside of the deck. So from the perspective of the, that little corner of the deck, it, it is gonna expand up from that, but it's gonna stay within the confines of. Of the outside deck in total and the outside house on the, on the.
Channel side, so does that make sense? To square it off on the channel side with the house and to square it off on the lakeside with the existing deck and future. Reduced size of the, I mean, because part of that deck is going back, but it's still gonna be in the front. Correct, okay.
Yes, exactly. This is not aesthetically, these, that would look.
Well, that's where you give it, then our house has, you know, like.
A lot of weird.
I think it really looks kind of funky.
Okay, I understand though. All right, anybody willing to kick us off?
Well, again, my questions always start with you, Doug, so if this is. So there's no meander line on the, and we're talking meetingly on the Laguna mark sign, that's where I says, and there isn't, it's a fifty foot. Shorter, from, you're talking about from the edge. And right now it's twenty-four, is that correct? At the closest point.
Yeah.
And then it's gonna be sixteen? Is that how you understand that? Or, I don't know, when there's a sixteen.
That's the size of this.
Oh, okay, no, the twenty.
So it's still twenty-one.
Here, and because of the way the, it's sitting on the lot, it'll actually go away. The twenty-four.
So it'll still, it'll remain twenty-four.
Or twenty-four now, but it will twenty-four.
Yeah, it'll actually get faster for more as you.
Okay.
Build up.
Yeah.
It'll be within, it'll be, uh, the number, the, the requested variance would be less than, than that number.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's the only question I have right now.
There's so many little.
Ryan or when?
Um, I don't have much in the way of questions. I mean, I, I see a unique property limitation, certainly, um. I think.
Thank you.
Yeah, um. And I see that you have taken consideration of maintaining the distance from the meander line, not, not expanding farther. Uh, which keeps us in line with the intent of the, the regulation.
When you're on mute.
I'm on mute, how's that?
There you go, perfect.
Fantastic, um. Just a couple, maybe just, uh. Few points, I believe, are you got, th- these are the plans you had brought to the table in twenty-one, correct?
Correct.
These are the same plans, right?
Yeah, other than the reduction of the one side of the kitchen.
Yep, okay, I want to make sure, I, I, I'll make sure that's clear to the, to the committee. So there are new. Uh, so the, the red outlined. Uh, areas. Uh, will be removed, is that correct?
The red outline area is the proposed new kitchen, if that's.
Um.
On, on sheet four.
Okay, so on the existing general main floor plan, two of four. Um, says remove upper deck, uh, and it has some. Uh, where's the mute? Sorry about that. Um.
Yeah. Yeah, we got it.
Okay, um, and then, uh, uh, on a dotted line, you, you hand dotted line the new structure on that, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay, okay, all right, and then. Scroll into the next page, um. In the red outlined is the new structure, right?
Yes.
Uh, and the dashed lines are crossed out, are, that was from the existing structure you had proposed in twenty-one?
Correct.
Correct, with a reduction of two feet roughly.
We just didn't take it back to the architect until, if hopefully this will be approved and then we'll spend money to do that. We just don't want to spend a thousand dollars.
Okay, I sort of make sure that is, uh, yep, I, yeah, I understand, I can actually fully understand, yeah. Now, what number, um, so, and that, um. I do appreciate you taking care of the, right, the. Unsafe uh steps coming off of your house, so, I mean, I know we addressed that prior and, uh, so you raised the deck. So one of the things that I have an issue with is on this plan is. Now that you've risen, uh, uh, brought that deck up, which makes sense, right, as a walkable space from. The existing dining room to the new deck and structure, now we have the step, steps coming out closer to the meander line. And beyond that. Beyond that, so now the steps areas are further out, right? Um, I can't see anything from the plans that show me otherwise unless somebody helps me out with that.
Yeah, when, I think what I'm, what I'm hearing, which was the same thing I saw is. The reduction in the overall deck size is staying on the same footprint. However, because it's gonna be raised up to be more of a traditional deck. Now, it's gonna need some stairs to get down from the deck and those stairs are encroaching further on the shoreyard setback.
That is correct. Unless somebody tells me differently, that's what I'm seeing.
Uh, uh, what I would say is on picture two of four, you can see that there are steps um already. Outside of the existing deck structure as it is, now I, I, no, I can't.
Or no, but, yeah.
Yeah, it, it may be a little bit farther, um, but I mean.
But those, yes. But those steps are not outside of your new structure, right, uh, in the dotted line.
Yes, they're outside of the existing deck, uh, deck line that we are using for the kitchen, yes, they are.
So. I would like to know how far those things, those steps are encroaching because those are part of the structure. Um, as we all know that steps are part of structures and go into.
Um, it could be.
Are count, are accountable in that sense. Um.
I'm sure that's something we could, uh, figure out. We, I mean, we could, you know, it could be one of those things where you come down and turn. They turn to the left and go down, you know, instead of coming straight down, and that ain't mighty aesthetically a little bit even nicer to, to have like an elbow.
I can't tell, yeah, I can't tell where your, there's an exit door from your addition from the. Line.
Uh, the exit door up from the kitchen to the deck would be on the back corner. Uh, that, uh, when you're looking at the, the picture of the kitchen, it would be on the back left corner. That would, that, that'll, that'll be patio doors coming out of the kitchen onto the deck. Uh, I don't know, I probably covered it up with my. With the back left corner, we have patio doors coming out onto the deck from the kitchen.
And but no other stairs, those other stairs.
There will be no other stairs other than the one you see going out from the deck to the.
I.
Here, you could probably change, we could probably adjust that to a L, L-shaped. Um, exit and probably make it even more aesthetically pleasing rather than just the straight downstairs like it's showing.
Yeah, and when, if I. When I overlap the two drawings and.
Yeah.
And take a rough guess, it looks like the first. Three treads are within the, the distance of the current steps distance.
Yeah.
And then five additional treads. Are beyond, and so I think.
It's probably about five to six feet.
Yeah, so having some type of, uh, either landing in turn. I think it is what they're kind of suggesting that would stay, it wouldn't encroach any further than they already are now.
Right.
It'd be reducing down the overall footprint that's already encroaching. And square things up and take care of a safety issue.
I like that idea.
I think.
There's a walkway that goes up to the point and we just want to make sure we meet that walkway.
Yeah.
Because we have a, yeah, you're right, we.
Yeah.
Well, we have a, so where's the picture?
No, no, I mean.
Yeah.
Because I think it will be. Um, so this is, uh, I can pass this around, but this is a, this is a high level view of our property. Um, and I'll pass it around, but we have a, we have an existing, uh, walkway that goes all the way up to a point. So we come down and match that and come out, so, you know, again, we got enough landing here to come down off of that anyway. Um, but you can see here where the, the stairs are and we're, you know, we would be even with this and then coming upstairs, I don't know. But I think you got plenty enough room to come down and then make a L, L shape. But you can see kind of, here's a channel on the right, um, and I got a couple other visual, but if you can pass that around, that might be a good visual of what our house looks like.
If I, I, I actually seen that from a viewpoint, I did a aerial, um, earlier. Um.
Yeah, this house.
I just, uh, right, want to be clear to the committee that. Stairs are part of structures and.
That's a good point.
Um. I think that deck can be designed properly so that we're not encroaching any further because we know the existing deck is al- is already encroaching into that area. Um, just like the building.
Yeah.
Um, and I want to take away that. Steps are just steps, they're, they're a part of a structure and need to be part of the design itself as well. Um, and that's part of my, uh. My concern.
Perfect, yeah, I have the way to turn to match up to their landing down below was gonna make more sense anyways.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, yeah. Um, any other questions or comments? If not, any.
Well, do you, so just so I'm clear, then underneath the deck is permeable surface then?
Correct.
Since you're growing up, yeah.
Yeah, and then we, we're actually putting down, um, the spiral.
Oh, they're helical.
Hel- helical or supports and, and it's getting.
It was storage.
Gravel.
Gravel, yeah.
Gravel.
For the flooding.
Yeah.
Don't say that.
We're technically.
I don't sandbags.
We're technically not on floodway, but yes, still a good one.
It's not a floodline.
No.
Yeah, we were shocked, yeah. We can show you with the sandbags.
Yeah.
We were, we were on the front page of the Wisconsin State. Very hard, nice. We moved in in, uh, that December and that summer was flooded, so we got introduced pretty quickly to us.
Yeah.
No water in our basement though.
You got to meet all your neighbors really fast.
We did.
And that was really a silver lining.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Any other questions or comments or, uh, possible?
I guess, uh, just a point of clarification that was mentioned of, um, sort of shoring up the, the stairway for, um, possible lift or something like that. Could you, is that part of this request? Is that shown on the plan?
Um, yeah, they're on the plan overall.
It's on the other side.
Yes, you're, you're right, there's, so there's two stairways, you can see, uh, one, this is the front door one. And this is another one, um, this is our front stairway, we have, we have railings on both sides coming in. But this one is like a freestanding that we would make that, we're gonna redo those stairs.
All the stairs.
To align the rest, because we're putting in the, the decking that's gonna match our walkway going out. Oh, we're gonna shore up that railing on that particular stairway so that in the future, when we decide to stay there and we need.
As long as they don't expand.
That, that is my.
Oh, no, yeah, oh, no.
I see what you're saying, yeah. They were.
He's saying, stay with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think they're wide enough that you won't have a problem.
Yeah, they, there will be, they just need to be replaced, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, anybody willing to make a motion?
I think I'll make the motion tonight, uh. Under the, uh. Preference. That both shore, we have two shore yard exceptions. And. The homeowners have made. Uh. Made good attempt, right, to stay within the same structure that they have. Um. And I don't see any. Uh, I don't see any, uh, unique hardship to the public. Um, in this instance. But I will make a, uh, on top of this motion, I will make a motion, uh. That, uh, no part of the steps or structure go beyond the existing backyard steps. And that it will need to pass zoning, um, to qualify for that. That is my motion.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, and Doug, do you need clarification?
Yeah, a couple of points of clarification. I, I don't believe you made, uh, you stated the motion whether it's to approve or to deny, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, to approve. Yeah, thank you, Doug, uh, I apologize. Point.
Uh, and then, so I have the two shoreyard exceptions, the good attempt, uh, to maintain the same structural footprint. No public, um, the condition, uh, of the steps. Could you, just, uh, for clarity, attribute what, which is hardship, which is proxy limitation, just kind of delineate, please, just for the motion?
Um, hardship would be the two side yard. Right? A setback requirements.
Right. Thank you.
And I assume the second is okay.
Second is okay.
All right, any further questions, comments? Right, here, yeah, all of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That's been approved.
Worked and built.
Thank you.
Finally, huh? Well, Lucy.
I think you guys are all spread out. Yeah, the new line. The new line now. We draw those stairs so they stay within the same footprint and then Doug will work out the rest of the guests.
Thank you. Doug has been awesome. Because there's a lot you don't really know.
Yes, well, yeah, you guys.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me observe.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very much.
All right, if we can move on to item nine, which is the next meeting?
Um, next meeting, uh, November sixteenth, so. Hi, good night. Uh, pretty quick turnaround here, November sixteenth. Uh, we are expecting uh at least one occasion, um, the individual just doing this, uh, building some birch havens, so. Uh, if there's any issue with that date, please let me know. Like, that's back to the regular schedules, uh, third, Thursday of the month. So, uh, certainly we'd be looking to to cancel the December meeting, but, um, we appreciate it to behold, hold on in November.
That's great, now let's.
Words for me.
Great, thank you. So proceed, um, just like a check, a couple of friends absent, then I'll I'll double check, but appreciate that.
All right, any updates on either the ID or sustainability? Nothing to say. All right. The emotion for German.
Motion.
All right, you have to pick who is the second. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, all right. Thanks much.
Thank you.